Good afternoon, and welcome to the Comprehensive Plan of the Board Workshop regarding several comprehensive plan amendments for July 2021 Plan Amendment Cycle. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order, do a roll call, and then introduce our speakers.
That's Madam Vice Chair. Silverman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Kemp? Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, as I mentioned, we are going to be doing the Comprehensive Plan Amendments for July 2021, the Plan Amendment Cycle. The next item on the agenda is the introduction overview, and the first item to be considered is Item A1, HCCPA 2015, the Future Land Use Amendment for Pine Key Island. Who's going to be doing that presentation?
That will be Unika Mills, Commissioner Oberman. This is Tony Garcia of the Planning Commission. Just as a preface to the amendments that you'll be hearing today, these are briefings that will be for informational purposes only. There's no action required by the board today. They will come back to you for adoption hearing on October 21st, so there is ample time, should you all have additional questions, or should the nature of any other plan amendments evolve between now and then. So this is strictly for informational purposes. We're here to entertain any questions or comments you may have. And so this should be a pretty, it's a pretty concise overview as far as what we're able to provide you today, just to give you a heads up of what's going to be coming before you, as I said, in late October. So with no further ado, I would introduce Ms. Unika Mills, who will be making the first presentation of the first item, which is Pine Key Island. Thank you.
Thank you. You recognized?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Unika Mills, Planning Commission staff. Can you all see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
I'm here to present HCCPA 2115, Pine Key Island. HCCPA 2115 is the southernmost amendment within the July cycle of plan amendments. It's located within the Tampa Bay, near Apollo Beach area. To give you some background about this initiation, it's privately initiated, approximately nine acres located, again, within Tampa Bay, and it's within the Apollo Beach area. It's within the coastal high hazard area, and currently the site does not have a future land use designation. Here is an aerial of the site. From this aerial, as you can see from the outline of the pink area, this site is, or has over time eroded, and you can see the uplands here. There is, what's left of it is approximately nine acres. And again, we have Apollo Beach area to our southeast. Again, currently, this site does not have a future land use designation, and that's the main purpose of this privately initiated amendment. The applicant is seeking to receive a future land use designation of public quasi-public. Other future land use designations, again, not immediately in the area, but in the Apollo Beach area, we have Office Commercial 20, as well as some Residential 6 here to the southwest, and Natural Preservation to the southwest as well. Currently, again, the site does not have a future land use designation, so there's no development potential for this site. However, if it were to be changed to a public quasi-public future land use designation, there would be no density potential, and the intensity or non-residential uses would be guided by the surrounding future land use designations. As far as potential uses with public quasi-public future land use designation, such uses as churches, schools, hospitals, public facilities of that nature, it also accommodates regional and community recreational uses, as well as tourist attractions. I'll be back before you again on October 21st for a trans-public hearing for this request. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. White, I see your hand raised. Did you have questions, sir?
I do indeed. Is this Beer Can Island that we're talking about?
That is correct. Beer Can and Pine Key Island, it's known as both of those names. That's correct.
So I'm a little confused as to the request for a quasi-public or public use, because there's currently commercial activity going on on the island, and to the best of my knowledge, it's privately run commercial activity. So would this designation of quasi-public-public remedy that in any way? I know there's been kind of an ongoing dispute over that issue. What would this designation mean in terms of the activity that's currently going on on the island?
In terms of the activity, if the site were to be changed to public quasi-public, the definition does accommodate recreational uses or tourist attractions. That might be the closest thing.
Yeah, but they have a big inflatable, yeah, but they have a big inflatable slide set up out there, and I think they're about to, if they haven't already started serving food, and I want to say there's even maybe a membership required, a paid membership for certain amenities that they've set up on the island. What would this designation mean in terms of all that? And I'd also like to ask staff about the fact that I don't even believe this is a natural piece of land. I believe it's a spoil island that was created, that's man-made. So what would this designation mean in terms of all those things?
I would have to do some more research as to the exact type of island it is regarding the spoil island question, and I can get back with you at the October 21st public hearing. Again, it accommodates recreational, regional recreational uses, tourist attractions, if it were to change to public quasi-public.
I can add a couple, I can add a couple of additional comments for you, Commissioner White. Again, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. Historically, you know that this has been, this particular item has been around and discussed for the last couple of years. There have been some code enforcement issues. We have been in contact with code enforcement regarding their concern as far as activity on the island. That is part of the rationale as to why some process has to be taken to, because as Unika stated, there is, there is activity on the island, but in addition to not having a plan amendment designation, it also does not have any zoning. So to get to the zoning aspect of it, we have to be able to give it a land use designation, and this is the request that's being made by the applicant for this. Now, the category itself does not require public ownership, per se, because there are a variety of uses. It's a pretty broad category that allows a variety of different things underneath it. However, it does not allow residential potential, which is one of the big factors that we had to take into consideration as far as what the request was going to be by the applicant. As far as what's going on in the activity on there, that does not necessarily mean that that is, those activities are necessarily being condoned, but they are occurring, which is why code enforcement is part of the process, and I do believe the code enforcement is going to be given, the people, the staff that we have been talking with, I believe, have are bringing to the code enforcement board an update on the status of the progress of trying to give this site a land use designation, and then, of course, subsequent to that would be a rezoning category, which would then, of course, at that point in time, place conditions and restrictions in hours of operation on the potential site. But to get to that point, we're having to, again, initiate the land use request, and whatever conditions would be placed upon that particular site at the subsequent rezoning would be up to the discretion of this body that we're speaking before today. So I hope that clarifies a little bit more what your questions were, and should you have any additional questions, please don't hesitate to contact us and ask us.
Well, I guess my concern is that, you know, up until a couple of years ago, there truly was, even though it didn't have a land use category, there truly was a public quasi-public use at the island. It was an uninhabited island. People pulled their boat up to the island and enjoy it. And then overnight, the island was suddenly supposedly under private ownership and had this commercial activity set up on it. So I think I'd like to have four questions answered at our first public hearing. One would be, is it indeed a spoil island and not a natural island? Secondly, is it under private ownership? And third, I guess I'll leave it at three. So third would be, how would this quasi-public-public designation remedy the commercial activity that's going on on the island, if at all? And I guess, I guess the fourth question would be related to the private ownership. How did a spoil island even end up in private ownership? I thought that all things were under the ownership of the Port Authority. So that would be the fourth question. If it is privately owned, how did it, how did it come to be that it's under private ownership?
Sure, we can be able to provide that to you. We could probably provide some of that to you. As you know, we try and brief the commissioners prior to the hearings, so if we have that information prior to the hearings, we'll try to see if we can address those for you, Commissioner. The one, one for sure that I can address, it is under private ownership right now, that I know. So, because the applicants have, have been requested to initiate some kind of action to bring this particular piece of property into compliance. So that, so since there was no land use category, that's the first step. Of course, there, as far as the process, as I was telling you, it'll need a designation, and then it'll need to go ahead and subsequently get a rezoning, and then it would be conditioned. But I do understand the nature of your questions, and we'll do, we'll research that and get the information to you. If it's prior to the, to the hearing on October 21st, we'll provide it to all of you contemporaneously. Hopefully, that would be the case. We would like to try and get you the information prior to the hearing, so we can have those questions answered and not belabor that too much, and you can have some productive discussion when we actually have the hearing on October 21st.
Very good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir. Are there any other, yeah, any other questions?
Yes. Commissioners, Smith has your hand raised, and then I have a follow-up. Mr. Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I would certainly like to see all those answers that Commissioner White has asked for. Very, very well done. Those would be points of interest, I think, to all of us, but certainly, I would like to be advised of those answers as well. You know, this brings up something that I've been thinking about for some time and talking to staff about. We have several of these islands in a various spectrum from natural to spoil islands out in the bay that have no land use designation on them in our comp plan, and I think we would be well-served to have staff at some point give us a report on all of those and have us consider publicly initiating land use designation for them before these things arise. I think in most cases, the land use designation of natural land that we put on our other natural preserve lands and habitat would be most appropriate, because although some of them are, and this one probably is a man-made spoil island, several of these islands, even the, including the man-made spoil islands, have, over the course of a long, long time, been kind of reforested within the natural course of things with native plants and become very important seabird habitat and nesting grounds for species that are finding their coastal habitat dwindling. And so they've become a big project of our Audubon Society, as well as some of the owners like Mosaic or the Port Authority have joined with Audubon, protecting these islands, especially during the nesting season, when there, it's really critical to be protecting the nesting seabirds and shorebirds that so many of us enjoy having out there, and that are a critical part of the circle of life and the web of life that revolves around our bay and makes it so, such a rich resource. So, you know, the fact that it's a man-made spoil island does not prohibit it from being designated natural within our comp plan. And as we know, we've taken on, in uplands, we've taken previously mined lands, previously farmed lands, and restored them to natural, natural uses, but Mother Nature has mostly done that with the islands in the bay. In this case, so, you know, I would, I would like to have staff at some point working on at one of our land use meetings, bringing us a report of all the islands that we have in the bay and what their land use designation is, and where there might be opportunities for us to have publicly initiated comp plan amendments to designate them as natural or public or whatever, but have that conversation and get those designations on them instead of just having them hanging out there without any being incorporated in our comprehensive plan. In this case, the owners, owners are running a profit-making venture on privately owned land, so it does sound odd to be granting a public quasi-public designation, although I'm open to the idea that, you know, there might be some public benefit to that, but we'll certainly want to be wanting to watch the zoning that comes from that. Private ownership has happened with the other islands. There was an Indian mound right off the mouth of Cockroach Bay that was privately owned. I believe ELAP has since acquired that. But anyway, those are my thoughts, and looking forward to seeing more information and discussion when this comes back. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Commissioner Oberman. I just want to respond very quickly to Commissioner Smith's comments in that, yes, Ms. Mills, who's just come on camera now, is actually conducting some research on those islands, because we are aware that there are islands out there that currently do not have designations. The ones directly to the north of this site are owned by the Port Authority and do not have land use designations. So we are aware of that, and we are conducting research, and yes, we will be, we will be responding to your request, because that's something that we already have on our radar to do so. So, and also, as far as wanting, being anxious to get the information based on the questions that were provided by Commissioner, Commissioner Smith, we, as I said before, we will provide it, as soon as we get that information, we will be providing it to all the commissioners at the same time. So those are all my comments regarding this particular site. Should you have any additional questions, Ms. Mills? If you have any other comments you'd like to make regarding this project, you may have the floor.
I seem to think that I saw Commissioner Cohen's hand up, but it may be down now. Commissioner Cohen, did you have a question before I asked mine?
Actually, I thought that both Commissioner White and Commissioner Smith covered what I wanted to, so I'm good to go.
Terrific. Thank you very much. I have a quick question. Clearly, this is a privately initiated amendment, and because there's some interest in doing something in either addressing code violations that have occurred in the past due to no designation at all, or to make it more clear the purpose of this particular piece of land that is, you know, an island, either whether it's spoil or natural made or man-made. My question really relies, it asks about the public quasi-public designation. From my understanding from the backup materials, it does indicate that churches, hospitals, schools, clubs, major regional district or community recreation services and other related uses, such as tourist attractions, utility and transportation facilities. I can see how some of those things are necessary if there's any kind of commercial activity that does occur on the island, but have we, have we got other areas where it's zone public quasi-public that end up being, as a, for example, a tourist attraction where there's commerce that's zoned for that particular area and that purpose? Because it does appear as though it would be parks and recreation, but in this particular case, we are aware that there's been commercial activity, the need for septic and sanitary services, freshwater, a variety of things in order to service a commercial activity on the island. So I'm curious about the limitations of this particular land use designation that could allow for future zoning requests that we are permitting in this particular application. And anyone help me with that one? Ms. Mills?
Again, you know, as you stated, all the uses that you just stated are accommodated within the public quasi-public future land use designation. It doesn't seem to exactly, may not seem to exactly match up with the activity that's on the site currently, but I think some of the, for instance, the recreational services could match up to some of the uses that the applicant may be requesting. You know, it is a unique situation. I think the public quasi-public was the closest designation that fit under what they're trying to seek, so.
Okay, so I'll follow up, I'll follow up with the following question. As they're looking for a land use designation, was this the closest type of designation that would accommodate what's currently going on there, or what they have planned to do there that you may be, may be aware of?
Right. I think this may be the closest designation with the recreational type uses or tourist attractions that are allowed under the public quasi-public. That may be the closest fit.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any other follow-up questions? Great. Thank you very much. Seeing none, move on to the next item.
Thank you, Commissioner Oberman. The next item before you is Item HCCPA 2117. That's a future land use amendment on Orsley Drive and Kingsway Road. That will be presented by Ms. Andrea Papendrew.
Ms. Papendrew, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission staff. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
This is HCCPA 21-17, Orsley Drive and Kingsway Road. The subject site is located just south of the Interstate 4 in the, in Hillsborough County in the northeast portion of the county. This is a privately initiated small scale, small-scale map mimic, excuse me. The site is approximately 5.21 acres, is in the urban service area in the Sefner Mango Community Plan. The subject site is currently vacant residential with a single-family residential parcel within the site. That parcel is not part of this comprehensive plan amendment, it's only the vacant residential portion. The site is located south of Interstate 4, north of Orsley Drive, and east of North Kingsway Road. Surrounding land uses include single-family residential and vacant residential to the north, east, south, and a couple of properties in the west. Additionally, along the west is the Hillsborough County Department of Transportation right-of-way and Hillsborough County Recreation Land. Further southwest is the Burnett Middle School. The future land use designation for the site is Residential 4. Residential 4 surrounds the site on the east, west, and south. Further south of the site is the public quasi-public land use category, and north of the site across Interstate 4 are the agricultural estate, Residential 1, and Residential 2 future land use categories. The proposal before you today is to change the site to Residential 9 future land use The adopted future land use category of Residential 4 allows for a maximum density of 20 dwelling units and a maximum intensity of up to 0.25 FAR with 175,000 square feet. The potential Residential 9 future land use category will allow for 46 dwelling units and a maximum intensity of 0.50 FAR, and the square footage would remain the same at 175,000. Any non-residential development over 0.35 FAR must be for office or residential support uses and not retail. And if approved, the plan amendment would change to allow for a consideration of urban-scale neighborhood commercial uses. Currently, residential 4 suburban-scale neighborhood commercial uses are allowed. That concludes the presentation for HCCPA 21-17. I'm available for any questions.
I'm not seeing any questions or any questions from the commissioners? Seeing none? And that completes that item? We can go on to the next item?
The leg does that when we're on the virtual, but I guess you guys know that. So the next item before you is HCCPA 2118. The presenter is Gillian Massey.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Massey, you're recognized. Please sit ahead.
Will you be able to share my presentation, Glenn? Thank you.
It's coming up now.
Great.
There we go.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff, and I'll be presenting a briefing on application HCCPA 21-18, Bonnet de Sassa Road and North Kingsway Road. Next slide. Here's a location map of the plan amendments this cycle. HCCPA 21-18 is in northeast Hillsborough County in the Bonnet de Sassa area on the south side of Bonnet de Sassa Lake. This application is a privately initiated map amendment. The subject site is approximately 24.21 acres in the rural service area and located within the limits of the Bonnet de Sassa Community Plan. Currently, the property is being used as an agricultural tree farm. It is surrounded by other agricultural uses and single-family homes. The subject property has two future land use categories. Currently, the northern portion is Residential 1, and the southern portion is agricultural rural 1 to 5. Surrounding the property, the future land use categories are agricultural rural to the south and east, Residential 1 to the west, Residential 2 further southwest, and Residential 6 further northwest. The applicant is proposing to change the agricultural rural future, future land use designation on the southern portion of the property to Residential 1, so that the entire parcel has a future land use category of Residential 1. Since there is already a Residential 1 future land use designation on part of this property, there will be no changes in potential uses on the site. The major potential impact by changing the agricultural rural portion to Residential 1 will be that the maximum density permitted will go from 16 dwelling units to 1 will be that the maximum density permitted will go from 16 dwelling units to 24 dwelling units. The maximum intensity stays the same at .25 FAR, but changes from 40,000 square feet to 30,000 square feet. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Massey, I appreciate that. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized for a question?
Yes, thank you. I was a little confused because the, the existing land use is said to be natural on your map, but the adopted future land use is, was some, let me see, something else. It was, okay, I guess ag-rural? Well, anyway, can you, can you go through that? What's the existing, the adopted, and the proposed? Just to clarify that, what does it mean to say that the existing is natural land use?
So there's, the, the property currently has two future land use designations. It's a split. So the southern portion, this isn't a great map, but if it were to be zoomed in a little bit more, you'd be able to see that the, there's a, a split in the designation. So the southern portion is designated as Agricultural Rural Future Land Use Category, and the northern part is designated as Residential 1. So it's a split, there's two categories on the same parcel. And what I, I think I was describing was just the current conditions, that currently there's agricultural use on the site. And what the applicant is proposing to do is to change that southern portion to Residential 1 so that the entire parcel has that Residential 1 designation.
Thank you, and if, if I may follow up a little bit, Commissioner Oberman?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. What's confusing me is page eight of the backup that shows this whole thing. If you'll go like one, one more page. In the backup that I have, like the next page after this map is, shows the map and has a, has the area outlined and shows, shows it with the natural.
If, if I may, Commissioner Smith, I think I can answer your question for you as far as trying to alleviate your confusion, and that is, the existing land use map, the intent of the existing land use map, that's not a land use designation. What it's supposed to depict, it's supposed to depict what the condition is of the site right now. If you recall, Gillian said that it's currently used as a tree farm. So a tree farm really would be considered in, in the depiction that we get as far as what the existing use is, we're having to use a layer that's codified by the property appraiser that gives a general overview as far as their description as to what they see the current site being at. So the DOR codes that were, are being used, that are, that are being applied for this layer that we're using for the existing land use map, most of the time is supposed to be able to depict what the existing lay of the land consists of. So natural would be what their assertion is, or what their, what their reflection is and their opinion of what the current site is. So it's a tree farm, so they're looking at that as being a natural type of use. So don't confuse that as being an actual land use designation. It's, it's basically what the current lay of the land is. You might see industrials, some, there, there's a lot of, of uses that are depicted within the DOR codes that are applied to the existing land use map, which do not necessarily conform to what the future land use adopted and the future land use proposed maps are intended to provide you with as far as understanding what the applicant is wanting to do and what their current uses are that are allowed. But the existing conditions is really what the existing land use map is supposed to be. So when it says existing land use, that's, that's exactly it. What are the concurrent conditions on site? So I hope that clarifies your question.
Yeah, I've got that. What is, what is, you know, just confusing to me is if it's a tree farm, why they wouldn't say the existing use is agriculture, it's growing trees, it's not.
Right, it's the layer, the layer that, the DOR code layer is what we're using in that sometimes, because sometimes we'll come up, we'll have, just as an aside, we'll have an R2 category and it'll show us mobile home park, but it's also a parking lot, it might actually be a parking lot. So that's, that's some of the glitches that we have to deal with when we, when we use the DOR codes from the property appraiser. But that's the best, in, that's the best source that we have because they're constantly going out and doing fieldwork, so that's, that's the most, you know, recent amount of information we have. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other further questions, we can, thank you very much for your presentation, and go on to A4, HCCPA 2119.
And the presenter is Ms. Krista Kelly. Thank you.
You, Ms. Kelly, you're recognized?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission Staff. Today, I'm presenting Hillsborough County Conference of Plan Amendment 2119. This site is located at the southwest quadrant of State Road 60 and Mulrennan Road. Next slide, please. As you can see on the location map, it's in the eastern portion of the county. It's just outside of the Brandon Community Plan area and approximately a little less than a mile from the urban service area. It is on the south side of State Road 60 and the west side of Mulrennan Road. Next slide, please. To give you some context, here's the site. It's heavily wooded with trees, there are a couple homes on site. It consists of four parcels totaling approximately 13.41 acres. The uses in the area to the east, along Mulrennan Road, there is the Farm Bureau Building, you can see here on the corner, also a gas station, and then Strawberry Ridge Mobile Home Park, which is an age-restricted mobile home park. It's quite dense. To the west of the site, along State Road 60, and adjacent to the side is a salvage yard in auto parts operation. And then to the, the southwest and south of the site, it's bounded by the CSX Railroad. Once you cross the railroad track, the uses transition to a much less intensity to, to the main regard. It's rural residential on large lots. To the west of the site, across the railroad tracks, there are some townhomes and apartments. Next slide, please. To give you some background in terms of the future land use request, it's privately initiated, it's a map amendment, and the site is within the urban service area. And again, it's not within any kind of community plan boundary. Next slide, please. This is the adopted future land use map, and as you can see, outlined in black, the site is divided. The northern portion is designated Residential 9. It's approximately a little over four acres, and the southern portion is a little bit over eight acres, and it's designated Residential 4. As you can see, there's a mixture of residential densities. Along State Road 60, of course, it's a little bit more intense, Residential 9. Adjacent, the salvage yard is heavy industrial. There is an apartment complex, Victoria Station, Residential 20. Across the street is Office Commercial 20. And then again, to the south of the site is Residential 4. Next slide, please. The applicant's requesting Residential 20, and as you can see, shown in dark brown, again, similar to the development to the west. And I just wanted to point out also that the Energy Industrial Park, this is, this grayish color exists, and it has no residential density provisions. It's mainly for manufacturing and processing and that type of thing, but it's quite intense. Next slide, please. The impact of this change to the 13.41 acres would be basically to more than double the number of dwelling units from 77 dwelling units to 268 dwelling units. Both land use categories, Residential 4, 9, and 20, have a cap of 175,000 square feet of non-residential use. The FAR, however, does increase from .25 and .50 to .75 for Residential 20. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, I appreciate that. Commissioner White, you're recognized?
Thank you very much. There is a lot going on near this corner. There are indeed some apartments just to the west that have been there for a long, long time. There's some commercial activity near the intersection that is probably, I don't know for sure, but probably grandfathered in, that, that likely predates some of our current regulations. You do have the, the newer, higher-density development in the northeast corner, as was pointed out. You have the gas station, you have a 55-plus mobile home park just to the east. Just to the south, you have a lot of suburban-scale, single-family home development. We do indeed, just a little further to the east, have the Energy Industrial Park. I don't know whether or not that'll ever get developed as planned. I've, you know, I'm just misunderstanding that, you know, there may be some, some private sector realities, or free-market realities, rather, that, that might be hindering that. But my question would be, just given that there's just so much going on near this intersection, is it possible to get a rezoning traveling alongside this comp plan amendment?
I, I know that that has been done in the past. I might defer to Tony Garcia, my, my boss, as to how that would be accomplished.
Commissioner White, I do believe that there will be a companion rezoning. I don't know if it's actually been submitted yet, but I do know that's going to be the intent of the applicant. And also, for your information, we already had in the pipe, she mentioned Victoria Station, the apartment complex, which is on the west side of the railroad tracks. It was designated by the dark brown, the R20. There's a plan amendment to expand that that's going to be coming before you all, probably in December. It would have come earlier, but the next amendment that we're going to be talking about has kind of rescheduled some of the amendments that we, we had intended to bring to you earlier. But anyway, there is going to be an expansion or a request to expand that R20 all the way to the railroad tracks from that Victoria Station so that you'll know that there, in addition to what's being proposed here before you on that eastern side, on the western side, there's currently going to be brought to you another request for an increase in density on that particular existing apartment complex to expand that all the way over to the railroad tracks, just so that you're aware of that. But it's not, it's not depicted on the map yet, of course, because it hasn't been brought to you for adoption consideration. So, but I did want to make everyone on the board aware that that is also some activity that's occurring within this particular area.
Okay. Well, a, as we've done in the past, I'd, I'd like to get a rezoning traveling alongside this one. It sounds as if the applicant's ready and that we can get that going, but.
Yes.
This, this one may garner some attention just because of the, the broad array of land uses around it, so.
Yes, yes, the representatives of the one to the west are also the same representatives to the one that's in the east, and I do know that they are, they are presenting a contemporaneous rezoning along with the plan amendment to the one on the west. So I would think that it would be their intent to do the same thing for this particular site, Commissioner.
Okay, and Mr. Gormly, that, that, that issue, that, the new legislation that involves architectural design standards just pertains to single-family homes and duplexes, right?
Yes, Commissioner, that, that's correct.
Yeah, will you talk to the applicant as this one starts moving forward and see if they can agree to, to do some sort of an architectural facade on the facility that adds some value to the community?
Yes, Commissioner, we'll certainly do that. And, and just to confirm, the, the applicant has not filed for rezoning request as of this time, so there is some time to, opportunity to shape that request.
Okay, so, so just in summary, I'd like to get them traveling together, and Mr. Gormly, I'd like to see if we can get something other than just a box look apartment complex in there if something does ultimately pass.
Yes, sir, will do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Smith, I mean, Commissioner White, for your questions. I have similar types of questions, but I also have some interest in making sure that this, this land use change in the, in the future zoning. You know, this is a long rail line, and I'm curious as to either the plan amendment or any zoning that specifically takes into account the rail line that runs adjacent to this property, how does that work? Because it's interesting, the names of the streets all in this area are very respective of the fact that there's a rail line there, although it's not a passenger rail at the moment, but there are some opportunities as those things evolve over time over history. How is, how is our land use increase, or the, you know, the increase in number of dwellings going to continue to protect that right-of-way along that property? Can, is it, Mr. Gormly would answer that question, or, or, yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Garcia, I appreciate that.
Commissioner, to the extent that that, is, is the question about preserving the rail, the rail line?
Is somewhat. I mean, when we're increasing the density allowed on the particular piece of property, obviously it has, we run the risk of encroaching along the right-of-way for that rail line that's along that way. Is that something that we should be sensitive to in this process for this application? Should it run hand in hand?
I, I believe so, to be sensitive, although for the, right-of-way for the rail line, if it's not included in the rezoning request, it will remain as is and will not be entitled with any type of development in that railroad right-of-way.
Excellent, that answers my question, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands other than yours, Mr. Gormly, are you?
Sorry, no, that was, sorry, lowered.
Okay, great. Well, seeing no further questions, we can move on to the next item, which is A5.
Which is the last item. So this item is the Private Property Rights Element Amendment, and this will be presented by Mr. Mark Hudson.
Thank you, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission Staff. I believe Hillsborough County Communications will be bringing up the PowerPoint, there it is. Planning Commission Staff has been working for some time to develop property rights elements, not only for Hillsborough County, but the three municipalities. If I could have the next slide. And the reason behind this is that in the last legislative session, House Bill 59 was passed and was signed by Governor DeSantis on June 29th, and it requires private property rights elements to be developed for each of the jurisdictions in Florida, and the Planning Commission has been working to develop these elements for the three municipalities in Hillsborough County. The thought behind this from the legislature is to ensure property rights are considered in the local decision-making processes of each jurisdiction in Hillsborough County, and of course, throughout Florida. We've been working closely with the staffs of the jurisdictions, in particular, their legal staffs, and we feel that overall the impacts of this legislation is limited as past legislation has protected private property rights, and all of our jurisdictions have been very mindful to protect the private property rights of its citizens. But nevertheless, we need to move forward with this, and if we don't accomplish adopting a private property rights element for each of the jurisdictions, it potentially can delay the processing of other public and private plan amendments initiated after July 1st of this year. If I could have the next slide. So these plan amendments, excuse me, these property rights elements are, I'll describe them as SLIM. We've tried to meet the minimum requirements of the legislative. We've tried to meet the minimum requirements of the legislation. They are very identical to each other, and they each have a goal, objective, and a policy. The goal for Hillsborough County, which is almost identical to that of the three municipalities, reads acknowledge private property rights to ensure their consideration in the local decision-making processes of Hillsborough County, and the objective would read respect private property rights in Hillsborough County. Then if I could have the next slide? And this is the single policy that would be in the element, and I'll leave this up for a moment so you can read through it quickly. This language comes verbatim out of the legislation that was passed by the legislature this last
Oh, hey.
Last session. Excuse me, I thought I heard a little bit of feedback.
You do. There's someone actually does not have their phone muted, so if you be careful there. Go right ahead, Mark.
Thank you. As I was saying, this language comes verbatim out of the legislation of House Bill 59. We did not change any language because we want to ensure that it meets the direction given to us by the legislature and ensure that we're on compliance with it. Next slide. As I mentioned, we're working for all four jurisdictions with this. We, you can see that we're projecting to have this come up for our decision with the Board of County Commissioners on December 9th, and we will be coming forward with the complete element for your consideration for transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity on September 30th. I will note that we presented the four elements, one for each jurisdiction, last evening to the Planning Commission, and they did find all four elements consistent with each of the jurisdictions' comprehensive plans, and will be bringing those resolutions forward to you for your consideration on September 30th. Next slide. That completes my briefing presentation. I look forward to coming back and presenting the full element to you on September 30th and stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I really appreciate that. Commissioner White, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I actually have several questions on this one. So broadly speaking, how will this comp plan amendment interact with other provisions currently in our comprehensive plan?
Well, when we are, our staff, the Planning Commission and your staff, are developing their recommendations, they will take a further look to ensure that these are not impeding or interfering with the private property rights of individuals. Now, we believe that, for the most part, the ordinances that are already in place in the county and the jurisdictions will stand and continue to be implemented, and that's why we feel that the overall impact is limited. I'm sure as, on a statewide basis, there'll be some disagreements concerning what this language actually means, because we weren't provided any further clarification from the legislature of what each of these bullet points mean, and some of that will probably result in litigation and go to the courts, and the courts will further give us direction on how these should be implemented. But in many instances, our hands are somewhat tied, because based on the penalty that's being imposed, we need to move forward to implement the legislative requirements of that bill signed by Governor DeSantis.
Well, that's a great segue into my next two questions. Does this legislation preclude us from incorporating provisions regarding the property rights of neighboring property owners?
I do not know the answer to that question specifically at this point, but I think that is a very valid question, an important one, and I will be sure not only to reach out to your legal staff, but the municipal's legal staff and get opinions on that, so I can respond accordingly on September 30th.
Okay. And if we end up adopting something that the state reviewing agency says is not compliant with the statute, what is the remedy in that case?
Well, I will note that we have supplied our draft to the Department of Economic Opportunity for an unofficial review, and they indicated to us that they felt that it met the requirements of the House Bill 59. It was an unofficial review. We still had to formally send it up to them, and they have another shot at it, but we fully expect that what we have developed will be accepted and turned around by DEO very quickly for your final action.
Well, with all due respect, I don't know that I'm happy with what we have in front of us as drafted. I, for one, would like to see provisions incorporated in there that speak to the property rights of neighboring property owners. People have a right to enjoy their property for the purpose in which they acquired the property. That might be for peace and quiet in a residential setting. It might be for certain commercial activity, and anytime there's a comp plan amendment request or a rezoning request in the neighboring area, you know, that can drastically impact the private property rights of others and their right to enjoy and use the property as they see fit and as they envisioned. So I think we do have to look at the broader community here. I'd very much like to see that incorporated. I'd also like to say to my fellow commissioners that 1,000 Friends of Florida has sent a draft model of how we might, or how local governments might handle this new legislation with respect to what we place in our comp plan. For those of you who haven't taken a look at it, I would urge you to do so. I don't know if we have anyone from the county attorney's office with the necessary background to tell me whether or not I can distribute that to any commission offices that might not have received it. I think I can with the proper memo that speaks to sunshine law provisions and things like that. So for any of the offices that haven't received that, I'd be happy to send copies to your office with the understanding that there's no two-way communication that would violate the sunshine laws, but I would urge staff to take a look at the 1,000 Friends of Florida proposal. It's something that I'm interested in pursuing versus what we have in front of us today, and I definitely think that, as I've always said, I've stated on the record multiple times that private property rights is a two-way street for any properties that might neighbor one another in a particular area. So I, for one, would like to see that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White, for asking those questions. I had similar ones. Mr. Hudson, I'll recognize you, and then I have a question from Commissioner Smith.
Thank you very much. I was looking for the hand to raise, and I didn't see it, so I appreciate being recognized. Commissioner, we did have very similar conversations with your staff and also DEO, and many of the points you made are right on target. Our, the advice that we've received, particularly from the Department of Economic Opportunity, is to get the minimum requirements under your belt. There are nothing prevent you from going back and doing a second run at this and add additional requirements within your property settlement that you feel are important and you particularly want to be brought out within Hillsborough County. We have looked at the 1,000 Friends of Florida draft, and it does give some suggestion for things above and beyond what is required by House Bill 59, and we're not necessarily opposed to those, but they, we felt that we needed to get the minimum requirements addressed so it doesn't impact the scheduling of plan amendments that are currently in line, and then we can always go back and improve that. There are provisions in the 1,000 Friends of Florida draft that relate to noticing requirements. I will note that those notice requirements are already in your procedures manual for a plan amendment, so you're already doing that. It's just a part of the comp plan. And there's also some other issues concerning voting and having super majorities to approve land use and zoning changes, and that's something that the Board of County Commissioners would need to discuss amongst themselves and give direction to staff. So our thought, and I believe your staff's thought, was to move forward with this draft, meet the minimum requirements, don't impose any delays on plan amendments that are currently in the hopper, and then come back with a second run to address any particular concerns of each of the jurisdictions.
Well, if I still have the floor, you know, this is only a workshop to kick things off. We still have a couple of public hearings or one public hearing ahead of us.
Well, you have a, right now, we have a transmittal hearing.
We have the transmittal hearing and then the adoption hearing. So I personally think we still have some time to put some meat on the bones here. I'd like to hear what some of the other commissioners have to say, but, you know, I'm interested in, you know, making sure that Hillsborough County makes a definitive statement that property rights is a two-way street and that neighboring property owners have rights as well, and I'm very interested in asking staff, our staff and Planning Commission staff, to take a look at the 1,000 Friends of Florida proposal and see what we might be able to borrow from that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We are seeing from the same playbook here. I was going to bring up the exact same things, and I feel very strongly that we should simultaneously make that statement, that property rights extend, as you put it, in a two-way street. We should do that at the same time that we are approving anything handed down from the state regarding property rights in our county. And, you know, the 1,000 Friends of Florida has been very studiously watching growth management. They are a broad-based coalition of people watching growth management from a kind of moderate view for a long, long time. I think it behooves all of us to look at their model ordinance that they have suggested for counties adopting this state language. And what, their president of 1,000 Friends wrote a column in, it was in the Orlando Sentinel July 23rd, saying, "But now that it's Florida law, HB 59 presents local governments with a golden opportunity. They can go beyond simply adopting the property rights language included in the law. They can acknowledge that property rights in land use matters do not stop with the owners who are involved, but extend to neighbors who might also be impacted. They can do so by affirming their support for the rights of all people to participate in planning decisions that affect their lives and property." And so, you know, their model ordinance includes things like transparency and a couple of paragraphs of who may participate in the hearing. I think it's very important that as we are committing to property rights in our county, on the one hand, we should affirm that in this county, we consider the, all the property rights of people whose quality of life may go up or down depending on what's developed around them, and that they have standing as well in our land use decisions. So I think there's a lot to consider in that model ordinance, and if there's things that are already covered elsewhere, that's, well, good to know, but I think it would be important to, if we're making this statement of property rights element in our comprehensive plan, where, Commissioners, this is our comprehensive plan, not the state's, that we state what is our values here in Hillsborough County regarding property rights. So I would echo Commissioner White's request to make the 1,000 Friends model ordinance available to all the commissioners. Now, let me ask a couple of questions about the timing. Is that Mr. Hudson or, then, yeah, Mr. Hudson? Has this been already voted on by the Planning Commission before our workshop? Usually, they, it doesn't go that way. Did it go that way in this case?
It did, and that's the reasoning being that it was our understanding that we wanted to expedite this process to the best of our ability to not overly impact plan amendments that are already in process, realizing the imposed delays by the legislation. So I would have to consult with our legal representative on the Planning Commission, but the stand of changes to the draft that went to the Planning Commission last evening may require that we need to go back to the Planning Commission for a follow-up recommendation for you.
Yes, that's, it's troubling to me that that process was, you know, cut in this instance of something that may have important ramifications, that, because in this case, for example, you know, we might want to, have wanted to convey to our appointees on the Planning Commission and let them have the benefit of understanding of, you know, our discussion as we can have the benefit of their discussion, so.
Well, I'm sure that we can make, you know, this available to the Planning Commission for reconsideration at any subsequent meeting that fits into the schedule for placing the materials into the element that you desire and your follow-up transmittal and adoption hearing.
I would like to make sure those Planning Commissioners saw the 1,000 Friends of Florida's remarks they included with their model ordinance. Did they?
It was not provided in their packets. I can't tell you if they received it through other means, but it was not part of their packets.
Well, given that, you know, it's important to a couple of commissioners here, I would like to request, if possible, that they be presented with that information. And getting back to the timeline, I mean, the way I understood the timing is, we are, let's see, we're supposed to, the state law says your city or county must adopt this new element by the earlier of the date of our adoption of the next proposed plan amendments that are initiated after July 1st. So, you know, we could be moving right along, adopting things that are not initiated prior to July 1st without this in place, correct?
That is correct. The plan amendments that are initiated prior to July 1st would not be impacted. Now, I will say that there has been some miscommunication, well, not miscommunications. Department of Economic Opportunities have given us several interpretation of what that part of the statute means. Initially, they had initiation meant that it was when it went in front of the Planning Commission, which was much more restrictive, and finally, several weeks later, they changed their position that it was just, if the plan was received and determined to be complete by the Planning Commission for July 1st, and that, I think Mr. Garcia might be able to weigh in a little bit as far as how that, that change in interpretation by DEO affected some of the processing of the current plan amendments in the county, and I'm not sure, but Tony Garcia or Unika may be able to give you an idea of how many plan amendments would currently be affected under the new interpretation of what, when the, when a plan amendment is initiated, which is now July 1st.
Thanks, Mark, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. So this really only applies to amendments that really have to pass through DEO. They've recommended that the local legal counsel for the jurisdiction discuss with the applicants on how to proceed for the small-scale amendments, which do not go to DEO. We've already been in contact with, of course, our legal counsel with the Planning Commission, and of course, the various legal councils of the various jurisdictions that we represent in Hillsborough County to discuss how they're going to move forward as far as providing counsel to the small-scale amendments. As far as the other amendments that are amendments that would have to be transmitted, they can be transmitted at the same time that the private property rights element is being transmitted as well, because they're just being transmitted for further review. The sticky part of it is when the private property rights element would come back, which we're, we have it scheduled to come back. If it moves forward to be transmitted on September 30th, it would come back to you in December, I believe December 9th is the date that we're targeting. If it were to come that night, it would have to be the first amendment that would be adopted, because none of the other amendments that are being transmitted, which include three amendments to the comp plan up- amendments to the comp plan update and a large-scale amendment, so there's four amendments, at least four amendments that I know of that are in the queue that would, their passage in December would be dependent on the adoption of the private property rights element first. They would not be able to be adopted if the private property rights element were not adopted on December 9th. They would have to wait until, of course, that was adopted. So the scenario that is being, is before you now is what would be the timeline of the private property rights element as far as when it would finally be adopted. So that's, that is the fate of all the other amendments that are being impacted because of this new legislation and when they will ultimately come before this board for adoption. So it depends on when the private property rights element will be adopted. But that's the general timer that we have right now, Commissioner.
Well, thank you. So, I mean, I understand that there's this time constraint, but I still think it would be very important to, and I understand Mr. Hudson's point that I heard was coming from the, well, anyway, I understand the point that we can adopt this now and then we can change it later, we can add on to it later, I get that, but I think it would be very important to transmit this with at least a statement of some kind that has been indicated in the comments of Commissioner White and myself and the 1,000 Friends of Florida, and then we can amend that at a later date. So that's my feeling, thank you.
Thank you, and I thank you, and I think we can probably get there, given that the December 9th, the Thursday, the following Wednesday, we have a comp plan amendment meeting already on the calendar, that's only, you know, four business days, I'm sure we can probably find a way to address this issue and make sure that we're adopting something that gives some clarity and transparency to those property owners that may be in the middle of all of this, in order to get some clarity on what it is that they need to understand as far as our property rights amendment. Commissioner White, you had your hand raised again?
Yes, I have a suggestion. I would like to see the 1,000 Friends of Florida model amendment placed before the Planning Commission for a vote before our first public hearing, and I'd like to have the opportunity to consider them side by side, the 1,000 Friends of Florida model versus what's before us today, and I would say that can be accomplished even if a special called meeting of the Planning Commission has to be called. So I know we can't do motions and votes in a workshop setting, but I see at least one nod of agreement from a commissioner that has her camera on. So that's my proposal, is that we get the 1,000 Friends of Florida model in front of the Planning Commission for a vote and bring that side by side with what's before us today. The board can vote, one of them up or down, make amendments, whatever the case may be, but I think that's a solution that would allow us to get this done within the timeframe.
Thank you, Commissioner White, I was, I can agree with that idea, and I was going to ask Mr. Hudson, or Mr. Garcia, is that something that can be accommodated in order to do that before our next hearing?
We will have to, well, before your next hearing, your next hearing is September 30th. The Planning Commission has a hearing on September 14th, which is in about three weeks. So to have staff put together a report, provide the information to them, and then normally our mail-out is about a week before, that's a pretty ambitious timeline to try and have it before them by September 14th, for them to look at it side by side with this item and have it to you for consideration by September 30th. I did like Commissioner Smith's idea of the statement about the 1,000 Friends of Florida as a note to your transmittal, because the idea is to, and there's a lot of merit in what Commissioner Smith is saying regarding the, some of the points that are articulated in the 1,000 Friends of Florida version. Our task was to comply with whatever the state law requirement was, that came subsequently from another source, so we were trying to follow the directions from the state as far as how to proceed with this particular process and trying to expedite it. I do feel that we can take whatever measures we can to do get, to get it before the Planning Commissioners at our September 14th hearing, so I feel pretty confident that we can do that. I think the executive director would be supportive of us being able to make that happen as far as taking the current language like that we have and lining it up against the 1,000 Friends of Florida. So we will shoot for that, to make that work for you guys, and to have it before you so you can see what the take is by the Planning Commission, by the Planning Commissioners, and have that before you for the September 30th for consideration as far as what you'd like to transmit.
Excellent, thank you very much for that. And Commissioner White, did you want to follow up?
Yeah, my only follow-up would be that I don't want the Planning Commission to weigh in on one versus the other with them side by side, I'm just looking for a consistency-finding vote on the 1,000 Friends of Florida model. They've already had a consistency-finding vote on what's before us today, I just want them to look at the 1,000 Friends of Florida model, make a vote on consistency, and then bring the two to the county commission.
Got it.
Us to consider side by side, vote one up, one or the other up or down, and of course, we would have the ability to make amendments as well.
Got it, Commissioner.
Excellent, thank you.
We will do that, we will do that, we will do that.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that. I don't see any other hands raised. Commissioner White, yours is still up, but I think it's just because you finished up just a second ago.
That's correct, and I'm lowering it right now.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, any other comments regarding this particular item before we adjourn? And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Have a great remainder of your day, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.